Good, you're on guys.
I cannot for the life of me get the.
Did you print out any of the other stuff for us? I didn't have time to print the new stuff. I know that that subdivision we're doing tonight is here. But then there was that word list thing. Is that here? There were about the.
Site family view?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll go do your takes two seconds.
So you're solar.
So what what else will we look at?
Uh, we got a vote on.
Right, I saw that. Yep, I got that.
And then we have a sketch plan review on.
Pumpkin Town Road.
Yeah.
Okay, that's it. Oh, okay, I don't need all my other stuff then. Great.
Yeah, so this is a. I have to add.
Oh, that was the that was the whole thing that never mind. I got it. I got it. I got it. I forgot.
Yeah.
Whatever.
Joe, how's it going? You having a vacation?
Yep.
Where'd you go? So. Have you been in Florida? Because I just put my mask on.
It's nice to get kind of a jumpstart on spring down there, huh?
Correct.
Is the pollen bad down there?
It was.
Not without escaping. This weekend is supposed to be really bad. Like, oh, where can I go? Where pollen's hard to pass. Yes. Well, yeah, where it's warmer, the leaves are already yellow.
Oh, yeah. Good point.
I'm specifically tree dog. Yeah. And run away for. For a weekend.
I don't know. My my board chair just came back from Key West. Actually, a couple people I don't want to key words.
I don't see David yet. There's Jeff. Hello, Jeff. Oh, there's David. Hi, David. Hello, David. Hello.
David, are you unmute by any chance?
Not. There's not a mute button.
I think that brown turns to the blue one.
Maybe been painted after.
You think?
I don't know. Amy's coming. Just waiting for Amy to correct. David? David? I just want to make sure it works. Because we're gonna need him for solar. David? Y'all bring. Oh.
Yes, I am. So it was taking a long time to sign in, obviously.
Amy just stood down for a second. She's gonna be right back. So we're just waiting to for her to get back to start. Do you know, I know that Dan Brown made a children's book with Symphony?
Yeah, I saw that.
I just, we went to it. I took my kids to musicals.
Yeah.
It was so good. And their school is going for a field check, so I get to go again. As a chaperone, I'm so excited.
Oh, that's so exciting. That's cool. Is he doing it again? What's the next one?
Um, I'm pretty sure they're doing it again at Portsmouth and Portland. One more time in the month of May. They did it in April and they're doing one more. I just don't, I don't know what the exact date. Should we just get started? Let's get started. Yeah. She can, she can go first. It is. So Sam say. Ladies and gentlemen, to the fire of the United States of America and to the Republic, for which it stands one nation under our individual representative justice. Everybody, so we're still up to next meeting, the Suburban Planning Board on Wednesday, May 4th, 2022, 7:00 PM. I'll take roles. I'm Hershey Hirschkopf.
Here.
President Sir.
Here.
Ken Conley.
Here.
And myself, Betsy Randall, here. So there's four of us. Um, we are missing tonight Mamley Go and our two alternates. So there are four of us here tonight. Um. So before we start, um, I just want to add a couple of things to the agenda. One is that we voted on passing in a change in our ordinance requiring a butter to be notified. Our sketch plan review and we we voted it, but we haven't had a public hearing yet. So we just need to take a vote to set a public hearing for one, uh, two weeks from today, which is Amy, do them 14th. For the 18th. So Wednesday, May 18th, um, 7:00 PM, public hearing. Um, and Amy will put that out on the website, um, but we just need to take a vote. So I'll entertain a motion to set a public hearing for two weeks from today.
We set a public hearing for two weeks from today.
Any discussion? Hearing done. Take a vote. Hershey Hirschkopf.
Aye.
President Sir.
Yes.
Conley. Betsy Randall.
Aye.
So we have set a public hearing regarding our change to the ordinance requiring a butter to be notified at the beginning of the sketch plan process. The next thing I would like to add, we did receive the documentation so that we can hear a sketch plan presentation regarding MSP 22004, the Howard Patton subdivision. And I believe Neil is here to present to us.
Okay.
Thank you, board. I'm not sure where you want me to stand to present for recording. Okay. Perfect. Um, so I'm sure most of you are at least somewhat familiar with the Howard Patton subdivision up on 236. Uh, it was associated with the the recent relocation of the Pumpkin Town Road. To serve the Howard property as well as this subdivision. Uh, this, we have two, uh, two applications with this submission. One is to amend the subdivision, uh, to actually incorporate all the changes that were put into place when Pumpkin Town Road, uh, was, uh, was built and put in there. That never actually came through and got approved as a modification to this subdivision. So we want to make sure we have everything tightened up and 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 all the lots that are existing and work with the right of way. Uh, that the town has has, uh, has situated out here for, uh, for Pumpkin Town Road gets worked into this subdivision. So that's, that's more of a, um. It's more of a housekeeping issue, trying to make sure everything that was done previously, uh, to accommodate that road is taken into account now with this subdivision and the way everything's broken out for it.
Could you just orient me? Where is the big office building?
So if you look at the Howard's buildings right here, and then the Dan Studios right here. So 236 runs, 236 runs down this way.
Yes.
And then this was the old, the old entrance road for the subdivision came up here. And this is the one that's been, that's been planted over now in the band and and now they utilize the Pumpkin Town Road to access all these lots.
Got it. Exactly what you're talking about. Yep.
So that's, so that's, uh, that's bringing this, bringing this subdivision in conformance with, uh, what actually got built out there for that, uh, for the Pumpkin Town Road, uh, relocation. Um, so that one's fairly straightforward. Uh, the only portion of it that's, that we have been waiting on to bring this in is there's an attempt to acquire this piece of land back here. Uh, because the changes in the right of way changed the areas of the lots such that this one is just, has just too little area to become two lots now, where it was previously two lots. And we had to shift things around to accommodate the right of way. So this is going to become, uh, one, just one large lot because the acquisition of this land just didn't happen. So. Uh, that was, that's the major change to the previous, uh, to the previous subdivision is we're going from, uh, you know, going from the six lots, uh, down to the five with this one larger lot back here. And as far as the subdivision goes, that's pretty much it. The second application that's in is for a major site plan to utilize this area as an extractive industry use, which is basically going to be processing materials similar to, uh, just when you're developing a lot like this, end up blasting and you'll have a lot of spoils out here. Um, so, uh, for the past, the past several years, this has been an area that's a material from onsite has been processed. And now, uh, everything has been blasted out of this site that's, that's going to be blasted. Um, except for possibly some utility lines. Uh, but what they'd like to do is be able to retain this lot to, uh, to bring in materials to process through here to make gravels and sands and, uh, you know, different gradations of material. Uh, and have that continue to go on here as they develop the rest of this and sell these lots. Uh, so that's previously. It had been kind of considered, uh, as part of just the grading of the subdivision. Now that there's no more blasting and and creating material onsite, we had to come through and get the conditional use, uh, for the major site plan. Uh, to to continue to do that process on this lot going forward. So those are the two, the two options, the two items that are in this submission here.
Okay. And so the other four lots then would be residential?
No, this is all a commercial industrial.
Oh.
Uh, uses. Yep. So this, this is actually used as, as, uh, the patent shop here. And then these would all be a commercial industrial uses on that, on that.
There's, isn't there a building on there already?
Correct. Yep. And that was always the, uh, that was that first one up there, which was Howard's shop up there. Uh, and that's, that's gonna, that's gonna remain as is.
Right. And and the the far boundary on the right, that's that huge retaining wall that when you walk, you walk on Pumpkin Road and take the trail, right? That's that's huge drop off down below, right?
Right here. So yeah, so when you're looking up here, look at that trail up here and then that's, that's the, the, the drop off where they had that excavated down here. So this is the existing shop to remain.
Right.
Uh, this was all put in, this was all put in, uh, with Pumpkin Town Road. And this was what was built up to here, this later gray area. So this is all was already constructed, uh, in conjunction with the town, uh, when that road was relocated. A lot of the subdivision was already kind of roughed out. These filters, these are all grass filters, uh, that have already been installed. Uh, this one is, is roughed in. All these have been blasted out so that they, they won't have. A lot of earth movement on the site anymore. It's, it's kind of a roughed in to the point where they can do the finished grading and get these, get these sites stabilized.
Hey, oh, can I ask, and I don't mean this to sound hostile, but why did the town pay to put a road into this development?
That's kind of beyond my, my scope on this one. This was, yeah.
Well, I get why, I get why Pumpkin Road was part of it, but.
Well, Tiff money can be used for commercial industrial development identified area. So. Perfectly legit. So just to confirm, I read it. But your first request is to modify what was your prior approval to bring it into conformance with what actually happened.
Correct.
Because it was modified by the installation of the road.
Yes.
So, and so. That's request number one. And request number two is really geared towards that one.
Just this one lot.
That one lot.
Yep.
For the extractor. So that's going to be onsite processing. Is it going to be actual aggregate processing or the mining or what?
It's not going to be any of the mining. Uh, correct me if I'm wrong by mis-speak here, but the, uh, the material that's, that was from this site is all been, is all been excavated and blasted and removed. Uh, you know, from its natural position. So it'd be, it'd be more processing of materials to be used at other sites there.
Okay. A hundred percent.
So can I, I don't know, Amy, if you know this or not, did we approve us, where, where, we go all the way back to the beginning, right? Because now it's amended. So we need to approve the sketch plan. Uh, that is what is up for discussion. Okay. Um. I just want us to, or I just want to quickly, um, read from our ordinance so that every, to inform the people watching. I know we have a new board and everything. I just want everybody to be really clear what the point of a sketch plan is. And, um, uh. Applicants formally submit to the board's sketch plan for conceptual review, um, a preliminary plan for study and modification where required, and then a final plan. Um, so really, this is just a conceptual review of the project. Um, looking at if there's anything that really stands out to us, um, so that they can come back with a, another plan that we feel like is pretty doable, but. To actually delve into it is going to be preliminary plan. So I don't want us to, to get too, go too over the top, but I do want to make sure that, um. We just review this conceptually. It makes sense so that we can move forward.
Did the prior subdivision have that one lot that was subsequently shrunk? That, that prior subdivision, if I understood, had six lots on there.
Correct. Yeah, this, this, um, if you're, if you're looking at the plans here, we show, we show this dash line here. That was, that was the previous lot split here. So this, when, when we had more, more area to work with, uh, that was able to be two lots. Uh, but, but now, uh, instead of trying to wait for more land to come available, uh, just created a single lot there and go forward.
There's the, that was the original one. It's all right. There's six of them.
Right. Yeah. So this, it's going from five lots, I mean, from six lots to five.
So at the end of the day, and application number one, you're looking for us to, to turn back a page. And it's gonna be my work. If you're asking, that's the kind of a, a who that.
Correct. Yeah.
Okay. So the one difference is to, to alter the subdivision plan and to accept it because of the road change, but also reduce it from six to five lots because of this. Okay.
Exactly. Yep.
Okay. I, I understand.
I'm just wondering if. Maybe Joe is the person to talk to. Me, is it? Is approving an extraction plan like something that we do?
Yeah, it's under the ordinance as a MSP.
Okay. Okay. Um.
This particular, what they're trying to do is just an amendment to an existing plan is number one. It's an amendment to an existing plan.
Correct.
So it's, it's really technical, you know, not real technical, but you're, you're just altering what was already approved.
Right. Yep.
And then the MSP for the extractive industry part is separate.
That's a, and that's a brand new application.
Well, that's what they submitted.
Correct. Yeah. It was, yes, it was, um, originally, yeah, originally it was, uh, when the, when the subdivision first came through, uh, and, and the planning board at that time knew that it was, uh, gonna be required to blast, you know, a whole lot of material out of there. And to work it onsite and to be able to, be able to, um, utilize what they could there. Uh, so there was stipulations in that approval, uh, where, um, we put together, uh, memos and, and, and some, and to back up information. Uh, that basically addressed all the items in the extractive industry, um, requirement, but it didn't specifically receive. You know, uh, approval as an extractive industry because it was just, it was material extraction that was just in conjunction with building the subdivision. So it wasn't, it wasn't considered an extractive industry at that time.
So then we really would need to vote twice. We would vote once on the plan and once on the extract.
You know, can I ask, there's, there were some proposed rights of way.
The proposed rights of way were the only thing that I'm aware of, just for the plan, for the plan that I put together here is just the change in the right of way, uh, from the, from the existing entrance from 236 to now utilizing that. Yeah. So that was.
Nothing else.
Question, free, let's see. Can you read that article to us? Amendment to an existing site plan. Does that require brand new process?
When was the last time? You were in front of us?
This, the site plan was last approved in, this one was 2000. 2011, May, May 25th, 2011 was when the, the last subdivision got it, got recorded.
Yeah. So we'd be starting back. I'm pretty, I'm pretty positive. We'd be starting back from square one, which is fine. David?
Yeah, I just, um, I wanted to add, I did, uh, Neil and I actually did talk about these two projects. Uh, and. He, he was originally just gonna come in with the subdivision amendment to sort of fix the right of way issues, but he also didn't want to. Uh, sort of think anyone was doing anything untoward as it were. So we wanted to present both of the applications together. Um, as far as the first request for the right of way, really, I think the most important thing on this is it's, it's really being designed to correct what was built on the face of the earth. So as long as the roadway commissioner, county manager, uh, was acceptable with, with the proposed plan to the right of way. I think the board can go ahead and, and move ahead with this, uh, with this as a subdivision amendment. The use of the property, although it's connected because it's the same land, I think should be probably, or I'd recommend treating them as two different projects because the right of way doesn't really have to do with the use that they're proposing on the lot.
And I guess to my first point, really, if we treat the first part as, that's why I asked the question, do we have to start the process over? And even though it's an amendment to an existing already approved technically in place that was then subsequently altered by the work of the town. If that's an amendment. I, I, I can't speak entirely for the word for word for the ordinance, but I would think that would be an easier process as opposed to a full blown MSP review for that extractive industry process.
And, yeah, like, like you said, that we, we wouldn't be in here at all for this amendment if, if, uh, the Pumpkin Town Road change hadn't come through. Uh, so that was something that, you know, we worked and, and, um, uh, the applicant worked with the town, uh, pretty close in hand to, to, to make this happen. Uh, and I, I think, I think, uh, the amendment was, there's, there's not much that can be done about, about the amendment because it's basically, it's there. It's, we're not really changing much of anything. It's, it's what was kind of, uh, forced into place by the relocation of Pumpkin Town Road.
And so do we have a letter from Tim?
I've been trying to get ahold of Tim for two weeks and I haven't been able to get ahold.
What do you think, the letter for the road? Even though it's already been.
I mean, Perry should have wrote one up when you. When it was done. So it would be just a matter of just him. Because it's all done. It was approved and. Got its graces and the whole nine yards. So.
It's just an approval.
It should have been.
Yeah.
Should have been done.
Right.
From the grace of this, we really could just make a motion to accept with the condition that we receive a letter from Tim. That he's approved right away.
Yep.
It's the simplest way. Yeah.
Yeah, I would, I would treat the amendment as far as the right of way like you might if they were subtly proposing an easement. If, if there wasn't a major change and it was sort of an internal easement that they were creating, except for example, between two lots in the subdivision. You could treat it the same way. If all of a sudden the lot started moving, that I would treat as more of a, you're back to square one. But this is really just, it's really making, it's a corrective change, um, to represent what was actually done. And agree to buy.
Thank you, David. Um, can we the motion to approve the sketch plan with the conditions of, um, the condition of getting the letter from Tim? And I will second it. Any discussion?
Yeah. Can I just ask a clarifying question? That we're approving, if we're approving the sketch plan, that's kind of signifies we're starting over. Uh, so the question is, and I'll kind of look to Joe and or Dave for this, that what I'm gathering here is we could really, unless there's a process that we have to go. that what I'm gathering here is, we could really, unless there's a process that we have to go through, we may be in a position to approve the amendment to the subdivision as presented tonight.
Does this need special?
Yeah.
Yeah, it should be just a amendment to the subdivision plan.
And so, all I'm saying, that one, that application that you submit to us, that you identified as application one.
Right.
That have a corresponding number. That, you know, I know we have our MSP twenty-one.
We could get, we could get that number so it could be on.
Yeah.
Just so the, the motion made, and I can cross-reference that particular. Yeah. That way it's done, pending the letter. Yes.
I was going to jump in, but you.
No, jump in.
Do you have a version?
Try again.
Yeah. Okay.
Is it? Propose. Remember to be determined. Didn't have to have a number to go back to twenty-eleven, as long as there's, you know, it was presented on the.
Based by, by what?
So, that way they're.
You're good, Amy.
It's got to be the.
M, M, MJS, number ten dash oh one. MJS. I don't, that's what it says.
Right down.
Number ten dash oh one.
Right. Ten dash oh ones, yeah, that's all far back.
It was January, I think.
It was quite a while ago, yeah.
I will second it. Any discussion?
Can we just have the motion be read? So, it's clear, so we are clear what we're going to announce? She's approved the previous site plan with amendment pending, uh, letters from the. Identified as a MJS ten dash oh one.
Right.
That'd be a friendly amendment on that. Make sure we're referencing that. Just want to make sure we're referencing the ten dash oh one MJ, okay?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, so vote Hershey, Herschel?
Aye.
President, sir?
Yes.
Tim Conley? That's your angle on, so, how is that? Now the extraction. I know absolutely none extraction. I don't know, is anybody else? What's?
Well.
I watched the read with my valyries, at least that was mine.
But I think the important thing to understand, it was technically already approved, some of the work that was done out there under the prior site plan, so what they're really asking us to do now is to improve the, on that particular, particular lot, the processing of the material. So, they're not in there blasting and digging anymore, they're literally processing the aggregate that's there.
Isn't that a use by right then?
It's, it, there was kind of the assumption, uh, that kind of working under for a while, and then it was determined that you really should have this, uh, this conditional use approved, if you're going to be processing materials, and you're looking at the definition of extractive use industry, it, that kind of falls under that court.
Literally, we just want to be in, uh, compliance with everything, and we want to operate it as a, what you would see as a construction company yard, where, yes, we process materials from there, but we also bring rock in from one job, put it in a pile, and process it, and then the next month it leaves to another job.
Sure.
So, basically, it can, what you would expect of a construction company yard in full compliance with the town is all we're trying to do, so it's not a gravel pit.
Right.
Not bringing in material. Yeah, there's nothing, being, unfortunately, it just falls in this, it, word extracted, so we're not extracting anything, and just, that's the.
So, this is a sketch plan, so we do have to go through a particular process for this one, so I think that some of the concerns that I would have, if you could just address them, would be on the environmental side.
Yep.
You know, the runoff of the materials coming in, how, what's your plan for that?
This one, well, and I'm sure you've already thought about that. Correct, yeah, but in this one, this, as, as you know, it, this has actually already gone through and gotten a full site location permit from DEP. And we have been through, uh, to get the, to get the site location permit amended for this setup when the Pumpkin Town road extension came through. The only reason we didn't bring it through the town is, again, because we were just trying to wait on that last piece to see if this could branch out and get two lots on this side. Uh, but that already, had already gone through, and I have, I've already talked with Jay, um, to, to discuss the erosion control that we want to put in place. Uh, and he was comfortable with it. Uh, these two basins, um, are eventually going to be grass filter basins, uh, once everything's stabilized. Uh, but until these are fully stabilized, meaning grassed, paved, you know, kind of a finished product type of, type of environment, uh, they are going to be utilized as sediment basins here. Uh, so we're going to have kind of a double layer of, of protection for this extractive industry use. Uh, so we'll have, we'll have our, our typical, uh, double-layer silk fence, erosion control burn, uh, at the, at the working area here. Uh, and then beyond that, any runoff that comes down through that site, I will hit these, uh, two settling basins, basically, that will be formed up as just small, small detention areas, uh, catching that sediment and being able to be cleaned out, and, uh, you know, disposed of properly, as opposed to running all the way down, uh, through the site here. So, these, uh, and we do have details, uh, for this as part of the, part of the prior approval and part of the, the prior development that's going to be going in. Uh, a lot of the things have not changed, so we've referenced a lot of that in the plans. If, as we go through the preliminary and everything, we want to bring all that design back on, just be copying it onto these plans and, and indicating the same thing. Uh, but that's, that's what we came to when we worked with the DEP, and they had got the same concerns about how we're going to control all the, all the runoff and the humidity and, and sediment. Uh, and so that's, that was the approach we took, and everyone, uh, everyone was accepting of that, so that's the same thing we want to keep going through, uh, keep going with on this plan as well.
So, are you saying you're going to pave, because right now it's just like a big dirt?
Yeah, right now it's.
Lot.
Yeah.
You're going to pave it over.
Uh, this, eventually, uh, once this, uh, once this extractive industry is, is, uh, done, uh, and this portion no longer is used for that, or in future, if, if it gets, if it gets changed, these will go from being our sediment, uh, our sediment traps into being, uh, full treatment filters, which will be grassed and, uh, and actually underdrained and, and go on from there. So, it's going to end up being, uh, more of, uh, more of the quarry settling basin type of thing, that you're going to get all your fine sediments out, uh, going through the kind of the, uh, the steps of ponds.
Yes, from, from my view, conceptually, I, I think it looks good, it'll, you know, I just would want on the, on the condition that we have something like an erosion control plan signed off on.
Okay, yeah.
So, it's not required to get a sketch plan, um, approved, but the preliminary plan.
Yeah, and I, like I said, I have talked to Jerry Baker, and he's, he's, he's on board with that, he just hasn't put anything together.
Okay, great, that's all my questions.
For those, uh, erosion control, is that on the property, or? Who owns that portion of the road?
This portion here?
Yes.
This is actually going to be, uh, we've done, since we have had the project in-house for quite a while, we've done a lot more than most sketch plans would, would, you know, see coming in here, so I might as well share this with you here. Also, these portions here, where you can see this dash line, you can see it from there, but, uh, this is going to be a drainage easement uh, that will be, uh, that will be required to be maintained, uh, per the DEP order.
Yeah, who's going to own that easement?
It's going to be, uh, there's going to be, have to be a homeowners association here, once, uh, the lots do get developed and bought out.
Okay, because similar to one of the other projects, I'll put again, the drainage materials and the ongoing maintenance of the Logan that's going to end up occurring and the replenishment.
Correct, yes, so, yeah, so it'll be, it will be the responsibility of the owner and applicant until such time that a, a homeowners association has been formed and signed on by the majority of the lots. So, for the most part, it will be on the, it'll be on the honest of the, of the owner to, to be doing all that.
So, they have HOAs in industrial?
That's, yeah.
Any other questions, concerns, or, or?
Yeah, um, the, the one thing that, um, and one of the reasons why we talked about this doing separately is my concern would be to know, have an outline of exactly what the, what the extraction or what is going to happen on the site, and how long is that duration, or if, if trucks are being, are, are loaded trucks are going to be proposed to be brought into the site in a commercial park, so I, I guess, just, I think that, you know, if this is sort of, while the lots are being built for six, nine months, a year, maybe, that's one thing, if all of a sudden twenty years down the line, they're processing material, I don't know, that's, I, I'd want to look into there, and I don't, maybe Joe's already done that, but I think some details on exactly what would be happening and what you're being asked to approve. Just, that's my opinion.
Okay, thank you, David.
We can add into, yeah, into a, into a memo and kind of a timeframe.
You're taking the motion to approve sketch plan? My motion will include sketching. Second. Any discussion? Here you go, Hershey, first thought?
Bye.
President, sorry?
Yes.
Tim Conley? That's here, I go, I. I'm second. I.
Doing things right along.
I also.
I was going to ask if you're sure.
Great, thank you so much.
Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, we did, you're right. Now solar farms. You did not.
Motion will accept the minutes from four six.
I second. Any discussion?
We have that glass. Aye.
Greg, sir?
Yes.
Tim Conley? Now solar. This is what happens when you're, when you're overtired.
I would, I would like to thank David for all his work, because his memo was really well done.
Thank you, David.
Is there a new memo here?
Yes, on the, at the very end, um, is the planning board question.
Okay, yeah, 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 okay. Sorry, I got. Next up, it's January, Dave here.
There, there's a lot. I mean, I definitely, I guess. It should be ten total.
Yeah, this was the other one's, I got thrown off to there.
Oh, yeah, I got that one, I got it.
But, uh.
Did you get one? Oh, sorry. Oh.
Like a page in.
I get the college. Um, I am going to say, David, and I don't know if anybody else agrees with me, but I do like the idea of limiting the cut slope. So, you know, there's the, there's a setback, but then people cutting trees back to get more sun, but not necessarily cutting the tree down.
Don't go to the trees, I mean, you know, these ones cut it down, you just have a dead so.
Right, so, not allowing people to do that.
Yeah, can you just tell me what number that, I remember that conversation.
On the very last page, I'm just looking at the planning board questions that David has, number six, shade management. Are you with me, Tim?
I'm on page ten of ten.
Oh, I'm, I'm missing a page. I, you know, I'm right here. I brought my. Very recent.
My bad.
Um, so, just process wise, do you want to sort of do this the same way we did marijuana, that, perhaps, and go through each piece? Or have David?
Sure, let's do that. David, you want to lead us through it?
And David, I, I would say, I, we, as everybody's read it, right? So, a, a long overview is unneeded, I think it's, it's great if you just get right into each item and go through it, and you can sort of flesh out what the, you know, issues might be as we get to each piece.
Yeah, the, um, just, uh, the, the first two, uh, excuse me, the first, uh, four pages, it looks like, of the information that I sent you was really a placeholder, because uh, that I was going to use as a template from the planning board to the town council when this information is forwarded. So, I didn't want to lose anything in the process, so really, the meat of it gets down onto page five. And I, I highlighted a couple of in, items in here in red, uh, and they all, uh, on this first page, page five, they all relate to commercial solar farms, and what I heard from the board was that we wanted to make some kind of a distinction between a solar farm that is basically creating energy, selling it to the grid, and lighting all these homes. And I think, and, and we talked about making it available, so somebody who wanted to install, like, solar panels or some kind of panels to run their own property and things like that, were still allowed to do that. So, I thought, did we need some kind of a, uh, definition for both the commercial solar farm and residential or non-commercial solar uses?
And also, David, there's that definition of community-owned solar that the Conservation Commission presented, remember, they gave us a little rundown and, and I don't want to make, I want to make sure that, that we discussed that number one and how we feel about it, but I, I'm more interested in, or concerned with the size and community or commercial same size. So, and I feel like zoning should weigh, so we just want to make sure we don't lose that information somehow. And also.
Is that a consensus?
So, are you more concerned, Hershey, with, you know, it's the size and not necessarily the full use?
Well, I, I think, I think as a zoning, as a planning board, our concern should be around things that are really limited to zoning, and to me, who owns it? And who, not that I don't care, I really care about that, believe me, but I also feel like it's not part of planning board's job who pays for it, or who owns it, or what kind of business it is, right? I, that's to me, uh, a, a different standard, and so if it's, if it's a twenty-acre solar farm, I, I'm not sure it's our job, and, and I could be wrong, make a distinction though about whether it's community-owned or commercially operated.
Size is the size, it's the same thing.
Right, and it's that zoning, right, that's what we're here for, so I, in that sense, but on the other hand, I mean, maybe we do have an obligation to weigh those two things, and I, I'm just not, I'm not really sure.
Well, one of the things that we've bantered around in the past is, what is the size of these things, and we kind of came to a conclusion roughly about twenty acres for the commercial scale application, but what is, is there a size for what would be a, a, and they may have told us, and I know we've got a lot of letters on it, what is an average size of a community-based solar project?
I think it was the same.
Yeah, see, that's pretty bad.
They were both the same size, it was just how they're operated and who owns them. And, you know, we do have concerns about what happens and how they're maintained, and what happens when they're out of commission, and that, that might speak more to the fact that a community-owned one is sort of local in that sense, and there's less concern, and that might be a zoning, you know, issue, but I, I just feel like, um, you know, our concern is where you put these big things, and that's, it doesn't really matter who owns them, right? There's still these twenty-acre solar farms, and it should apply to both, both condition, both, both groups, right? Does that, does that make sense? David, when you see this stuff, do people worry about that?
I, I'm looking at, you know, whether it's a community-owned solar farm or a commercially-owned solar farm, it, it's really on how, what we call it, and how we define that, and I think that that is a definition that we really want to flush out to make sure we cover all that. What I'm trying to keep out of that, you know, site plan sort of requirement would be if, for example, I'm going to pick on Joe, Joe wants to, uh, you know, put up solar panels on his roof, and he has a barn, and he says this and that, and he wants to put up a small unit where he's not selling back, he's basically. He's basically generating energy for his property and you can do that sometimes.
I totally get that. Um, but have you seen in any other solar ordinances? Distinction between those that are community owned and those that are commercial or, you know, a private? No, okay.
So I, I would agree with you Hershey in that approach that we shouldn't say commercial versus community. We should really look at the size and regulate the size and what we want to do with the size. Uh, I'm in full agreement on that and closely tied to that for me is really going to be, you know, as I go back and think about some of the prior issues that have come up have really been the butter notification, which was a big issue with some of the prior ones, but also the, uh, which hopefully we'll address it. And then, um, the setbacks. And we had some conversations about setbacks. Last time we talked about solar and I really would like to see some good discussion that a hundred feet is not enough. In my view, uh, I'm happy, but you can still look through them clearly and see these things. And then Ken, last time, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but you really had also talked about the, uh, line of sight. You know, I'm, I'd like to kind of have more conversation about that when you get to the setback. But I guess you get back to what Hershey was saying. Yeah, I, I, my perspective Dave is that it addressed solar panel installations in general, commercial or community. And that we just look at it overall. I have no desire to regulate people putting panels on their roofs or out in their front yard. That's, that's a personal thing that.
Right. Right. And I, I, I don't want to either, or, or I wouldn't recommend doing that either, but I think there, there should be, even if it's just in the definition section of the ordinance, some kind of distinction. Because someone could say, well, I am doing this for my own property.
Yeah.
You know.
I'm in agreement Dave for moving forward.
Okay.
Census, I'm in agreement with Hershey.
I'm in agreement.
Yeah, we should draw a line.
Yeah. Hey, and also, um, I don't know when this comes up in our discussion, but, um, I'm also concerned about the definition of public utility. Cause I believe we're going to take it out of that, right?
Uh, yes, it would, it would come out of public utility. So, okay.
Right.
Sorry, I'm trying, I'm gonna take, I've been, I'm gonna take notes into my document that I was working on, but you don't have that in front of you. So I want to make sure I don't miss anything. So hopefully next time we see this, we're further down the line. Let's see. All right. Uh, so, so we need to separate the commercial. So I got that. Hold on. Pardon me.
Do we care about defining sort of commercial solar farms? Well, I'll let you come up with the definition of, I know you have it in here. Hey, and, and it occurred to me, and we don't, this will not be brought up for the next few months, but, um, if there are other things in public utility that might sort of run in the same direction as this, like there isn't really the public benefit quite the same way. Because it's a private corporation, maybe it is where we're wading into that issue again. Um, we should take another look at public utility. It gives it a path on everything, right? That's part of the problem.
We could define, we could define public utility more to be more specific.
Well, I think municipal operation, but like waste disposal is on it. And then you guys, you know, somebody could come in and want to put, right? Right, a, a competing transfer station and you know. Heaven forbid. Okay. Right, so put that on a back burner, David.
So in regards to the point and disturbance. Are we all in agreement? That that looks good?
So the only question I have is the sentence that says the code officer may approve in writing the clearing of a small, of small areas of specifically, specifically required during the site design phase of the project. Can you give me an example of what that means?
I, I'm sorry, Greg, could you point out on what page are you?
I'm on, uh, page five of 10.
Okay.
Moment, I'm referring to A1.
A1, okay, land disturbance.
Yeah, and then says begins with the CEO may approve in writing the hearing. I'm just kind of curious that one sentence, what? Why would the person be going in and clearing areas? Is it to give soil samples or something or?
Yeah, I, I, I wanted to, uh, have something in there. Occasionally they want to go into a site. You need to clear to get into a site to, to do whatever. And I, so I was thinking that the CEO, if we say you cannot do a darn thing. So they're trying to design the site. They can't get the equipment in there to, you know, take shots of what the elevations are, whatever. So.
But also in, in the beginning of a project, right? I mean, they could have banned, we've had two solar projects already abandoned in town, right? And they might have, you know, before DEP review or inland fishing wildlife, once again, they might, you know, cause damage to a wetland crossing, uh, without any kind of review and then decide not even to put in solar and abandon the whole project. So I, I can't say I'm, I, I don't believe we let other projects move forward with any kind of clearing before they've gotten a permit, right?
Good.
Right?
Right.
They can clear, they can clear land on that property. Before a project is approved.
Wasn't there a whole thing about somebody asked for permitting up on Emery's Bridge Road? And he wasn't supposed to have started a road in there before he'd gotten his building permit approved?
You can put driveways in, you can put roads in, you can do anything. You can't put buildings in or structures without permits.
This was definitely a road that was in contention and everybody was.
Great Works Drive, Great Hill Road.
Yeah, I remember, I remember Bill was really upset about it. He thought he'd started clearing it for a road before we approved it. Maybe it was a subdivision.
Well, it's probably going to be a subdivision.
It could have been a subdivision, yes.
Because you're right, you can't.
Yeah. Cause you gotta, you gotta prove that that's where it's going to go and everything else.
Well.
I'm not opposed to it. I was just wondering, it's, Dave, you've answered my question. I'm, I'm okay with one. As, as submitted that I don't.
I mean, if Joe, I mean, Joe's the CEO. So what, at the end of the day, it's going to be the code officer who makes that kind of determination. What is a little sort of, you know, we're going in there to see what we've got on the face of the earth and maybe check some critters as opposed to cutting down everything on the site and not technically disturbing it. You don't want to go out to the site and see all the trees are cut. Then they go, well, we want to put a solar farm here and, and then you go, well, what about all the trees? Well, they're gone. So.
My biggest thing, well, in the one on, on Old South Road. They, um, timber cut the whole lot before they decided to come in for a site plan for.
They did?
Yeah, which they haven't ever right to do. You know, the owner sat there and cut all the timber off of it and then he sold it for a solar farm. That's not against the law. I mean, I would have an issue signing off unless it was the only thing they could do to keep the equipment off the main road. That would be the only thing that I, you know, give a little leeway to. But because once you give them an inch, they might take a mile. So it, it is subjective. But if they had to get equipment off the road, I would say, yeah, go ahead and cut this little area, probably as big as this room or something like that and say.
Can we, can we further define small areas than, what purpose? Is that good? Okay.
It'd probably be a little bit easier.
Yeah, well, what?
Okay.
But why don't you suggest what, you know, what?
Yeah, I'll, I'll talk with David.
Okay.
Okay, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, because, yeah, because you can say, yeah, you, you do this, but then they get in there and they just thought, well, I needed this for this. And you know, and it's like.
Right. And, and unfortunately Joe and I have had to deal with the, oh geez, we didn't know we could cut all the land. We didn't log it yet. I mean, we, we logged it, but we didn't remove the stumps. And when you do the stumps, that's when you start disturbing the soil. So, you know, by the time you cut the trees, it's, it's okay. So I'll add something in there.
Yeah.
Ken, do you have any comments in land disturbance? Okay. So Hershey, are you good for us to move on to setbacks?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Yep.
So moving on to setbacks, all commercial solar farms shall provide the number of 100 foot uncut slash unstirred setbacks surrounded, requires security fencing. Yeah, Ken, you want to start?
Yeah. One specific language just to natural buffer. We had a couple meetings ago. Yeah, so obviously now here's a one. My, well, I remember.
Yeah.
Yeah, I believe it was, uh, if, if there was 500 foot or more natural buffer, no effect in line of sight, there was no butter notice required. But if there was, uh, less than that, if we had a two month lead time on a butter notice. Required.
And Greg, you think you want to make it more?
I'm, I'm, I'm kind of agreeing with what Ken was saying because we had this conversation a couple meetings ago. And I really liked where he was going, where, with the line of sight approach. You know, a hundred feet, you're going to see it from the road. You're going to see it from your back porch because you can just see a hundred feet through the woods. And so, uh, this could potentially become almost self-regulating. If you do, you, you know, from a proper, from my property line, I can't see it. So in other words, I, I do not have a visual line of sight. A little bit different than what you're saying. That's not a footage thing, but if I can't see it, I'm not, I will, I'm not going to agree on that butter notification. I think they should still be notified, but, I think if I, if I can't see them from a property line, then that's a good setback.
Yeah.
Could be 300 feet, could be 200 feet.
That's a little subjective.
Well, it could be, yeah.
How do we codify that? I mean, somebody could just say I can see it and object and, I mean, are we talking that I live on a hill and I can see it? That's one thing. As opposed to I can just sort of see it through the woods and like sometimes I can see Michael Leslie's house and sometimes I can't. And if it's fall, I can see it, right? If it's spring, I can't.
And that's why, and that's why, and that's why he had line sight, but also an, an actual distance and.
I like, I like the idea of.
It may need to have two.
Yeah.
Two of those, kind of one or the other, whatever.
Yeah.
Is the, but I think that would, as I go back and think about a lot of the prior conversations have been, you know, the visual impact that these things have. So I think we just want to really pay attention to that.
Right, though there in some ways I don't think there's, there's a solution because if we go back to the old South Road one.
Yeah.
There's a guy who, you know, he had this compound he'd created over years and he lived on a hill. And it doesn't matter how much the setback was going to be, he was going to overlook that. And there's just, I don't see a fix for that. I mean, I think that's a pity, but I just don't see what we can do about it.
I could do the resolve. I hear you.
Yeah. Well.
But I think the setback needs to be addressed and.
I mean, I'm, I'm okay with the, with the larger setback. I mean, the, the amount of property you need for these is pretty extensive anyway. We're talking 20 acres and a lot of them are, um, I think the one that was approved that was near Junction Road was on an 80 acre lot and stuck right in the middle of it. Right? So there was, you had to walk your way in and it took us 15 or 20 minutes to get into where the edge of the site was. So. But I'm okay with a bigger buffer if people want to propose it.
And I just want the number up to one, one of five. It's just something we.
Well, I think 500 is more than adequate, right?
I would go with the line of sight or 500. And to have a one or the other.
Well.
Whereas it becomes too subjective.
Well, yeah, I can just live it. I mean.
Yeah.
That's basically if I can see it, I don't, I don't, you don't get to go with that. A lot of conditions that are.
I can see.
Yeah.
I could, I could work on, uh, on some suggestions maybe next time on that. I've got it folded here.
And you know, I, yeah.
Dave, for, and for the rest of the board members, I, I would say for me, just as one board member, put in 500 feet and let's just see what that looks like in the document. And it can always be adjusted at one of the subsequent meetings. At least we're putting something down.
Yeah.
And given Dave's direction. So he's not coming up with something, you know?
We want to dictate our minimum at under professional approvals and whatever else as well. Or just 500.
Let's just, my, my preference would say stay with 500 and then let's see where the rest of the ordinance goes.
Like, let's just, that's fine.
All right. So our number two, you want that increased to 500?
Yeah.
Should make the gun this down. Who was that?
Okay, number three, shade management. The application shall include all areas where shade management is proposed and a detail of the proposed shade management area cut slope in relation to the prior buffers, fencing, solar panels and related to other private. Shade management areas may not be included within the required setbacks. So then.
I'm sorry, I don't really understand what this all means. Can you explain a little?
Yeah, so the cut slope, what we're talking about, so like, yeah, so let's say somebody has like a 500 foot setback and they're like, and.
They're not getting sun and they're going to cut the trees in a slope in order to.
On the setback.
They call that shade management. I got you.
Yeah.
Shade man, whatever. Funny you.
Or they, or, or they call it solar corridors.
Right, okay.
So you're, you're facing, it, it's cutting down the trees and it's sort of a, imagine CMP, but worse, you know, just sort of slashing.
I can't even imagine.
I can keep.
It defeats the purpose of a setback.
Well, I, I don't think we should allow them to test the setback. I mean, that's the whole point of the setback, right?
So the shade management area should not include the setback.
Right, yes.
And I've got it in there.
So that looks good to me. Any comments, questions? Okay, for buffering, visual mitigation, all equipment such as solar panels, transformers and equipment used in the operation of the solar farms shall be buffered slash screened from adjacent roadways and surrounding residential uses in regards to view and glare to minimize, mitigate, and reduce disruption.
So one question is, say you put something out like way down, like we have in Berwick on 236 already, right? There's a solar farm down there and it's not wooded to begin with. It's a field. Right? So you do a 500 foot setback, but you still see it because it's in a huge field. Will we require the, the, the forest around the field now? I mean, that's, right?
I think, I think my opinion would be if you say you gotta have a buffer at 500 feet and there's none there, it can't go there. That's the way I would look at it. Because that's what you're telling them. If you don't have a 500 foot buffer, you can't do it. Now you're really getting them restricted.
Wow.
But that's, that's my opinion.
Well, and then I, you know, and then the, the problem is we have to weigh, do we want to lose forest that people will cut? Or, you know, which some of which should be maybe and not all forests are the same, or do we want to lose greenfields?
But this is the purpose of zoning.
Right.
Is to find the harmonious balance with all of the uses and people that live out there.
Yeah.
There may, you know, if a 500 foot buffer is going to cut down the project, then they probably don't have enough land to begin with.
Yeah.
Yeah, but like she said.
Right.
There was no trees to begin with.
Right.
So you could have gone a thousand feet and there's no trees.
Right.
It was open area. You just, you know, that would have excluded that whole lot from ever being developed.
Well, unless, unless they planted forests.
Planting diagram, that's not, you know, there, people have one.
That's a lot of reminding. Reminding. Can you imagine?
Well, I mean, you gotta draw the line somewhere.
Of course. Oh, no, I, I knew what you're saying. This is, yeah, this.
Well, so I, we should really, I mean, but we should sort of dig into what. But I mean, I, I'm not sure we should exclude fields in which case, you know, we should be more specific about what the buffer can be. I assume, you know, if that's the natural buffer, you can't achieve that, right? There's no way.
I mean, I'm also, when you think of buffering, you know, what's on it then? You know, it's in industrial zone. Doesn't matter, but obviously residential.
It'd be great if it was solar panels and all that, that whole quarter because of, you know, it's just wasted land. There's not much else you can do.
Yeah, so can we, is there a way to to define buffering in a way that is different between residential and commercial and industrial neighbors? If that makes sense?
Yeah.
So for residential neighbors, there needs to be a buffer, a visual buffer. But for roadways and commercial properties, there doesn't need to be.
So.
Well, you want to, not commercial properties, you probably want to address it by particular, so.
Yes.
To use, yeah.
And actually, once again, I too have a resident, well, I once have one residential, you know, really, but there's some houses there too.
With the, with the, with the property boundaries. It all bucket. That's residential area anyway, so. You're almost saying nothing out there, which.
You're almost saying nothing out there, which that we're finding. So if we, so if we look at the setback as a separate issue with the buffering, maybe for, you know, and the buffering being a different issue, which is the issue with the the field. Maybe we'll have to say a, a planting diagram or something, you know?
Well, and also, it, the buffer visual, I mean, this is green. I mean, you know, that can mean anything. Right?
I don't know if I really care about it being buffer or screened from a road. I just think from property lines.
Yeah, though, if you lived across the road from it, right? Say your house was on two thirty-six and they put it across the other side of two thirty-six. Now you're gonna be looking your whole life at this huge solar plant.
And you live on, but you live on two thirty-six.
Well, people live on two thirty-six, but you know, other places out there, that's a bad. Hey, we can't, we can't all live in Old Mill or Aggie. I mean, you know, none of us is that fortunate.
I don't know, I'm, I'm more apt to, to go the route where buffering to the, to the road, I don't care about a buffering to neighbors is a problem.
I, I guess I would say, so we can, I'm happy if Dave can come up with some, some considerations for us. Is that something you can do for us, Dave?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, yeah, I'm trying to think of how we could do that. I mean, I, I have seen things not for solar uses necessarily, but for buffering uses between uses. So you have almost a matrix where it would say, okay, you are, you're in X zone, you're next to this use, and therefore you need this kind of buffering, but I don't know if we want to get quite that complex. I mean, there is a difference. Let me, let me play with it a little bit. I know, I know we can do it, it's just a matter of how it's done. So maybe if I put something together, you guys, you know, that'd be good if you sort of turned it upside down, that'll, if you know what I'm saying. Let me play with it, I'll bring something back and then you guys make it work properly.
Who'll use with a Christmas tree farm around the whole thing?
There you go.
Okay, so number five, minimum application requirements. In addition to the requirements listed under chapter one forty-seven seven, the application shall include the following items. The project narrative, applicant shall provide detailed project narrative. The narrative shall specifically address how view and glare buffering will be provided from surrounding properties and roadways in addition to details of the below submitted requirements.
Wait a minute, I'm over, why, where's the A? Why is it B? Or go A, A has a one, two, three, four, five, but under five, is that a subset?
Oh, wait.
Right.
It is a new section, right? It's not under five. Okay, sorry.
So then, what is the, because it says the application shall include the following items.
It's a subset.
Yes.
I, 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 I think I left out the A. That, let me, I'll figure out the number.
Okay.
That's fine.
So a project narrative, environmental impact assessment, site plan, cross-sections, site maintenance plan, end of life site restoration plan, and air and glare protection. So if we look specifically at environmental impact assessment.
It could, can, can I ask, isn't this already somewhere in our code though? I mean, this is already required in others. Yeah, so is it, is it redundant to have it here or is it?
There, uh, yes, we do have it covered in the site plan approval process. Some of the items, uh, that I, that I listed in here have come from other things that we, we've talked about, but I want to make sure that they are part of the actual ordinance because they don't always read all of the site plan, but I wa, I, I just want it in there. If you want, we can, we can, I can knock out whatever we already covered.
I think in this case redundancy is worth it, just to.
Right.
That's fine, all right.
And the critter corridors. You can't forget the critter corridors.
I don't think any deer can fit under a six inch fence, just saying.
Well, that's if you consider to be our critters.
The baby ghost. Okay.
All right, so definition for critters and what I'm hearing.
Yeah, we'd like a definition of critters.
Again, there's been some conversation in the past and maybe in the site plan, but it may be worth repeating here. Devil IF and W and DEP, do you want them to have an approval prior to coming or?
Oh, the one, the one on Old South Run, we approved with conditions, which I can't tell you anything about. But, um, they, then they couldn't really move forward and show them maybe that until they got approvals and then they disappeared on us because they assumed they didn't. Um, but once again, I keep asking that we get them earlier rather than later because we go through this whole process and then they.
Substantive impact on what we're doing.
Right, and, and then they have to, and, and also in their favor, they have to completely revise their plans, right? So what a waste of time. They've got a lot of work to do a year until they have found all the impacts and, you know?
I, I would then suggest that it be done first, so we limit our time.
Well, can we make them give us that upfront? I mean, is that, it's sort of a method of use, right? Just the problem is that you can't really take.
So, I mean, David, correct me if I'm wrong, but that's basically what we're saying, that they have to provide those things when they submit their initial application.
I, not necessarily at their, at their application, prior to approval of the uh, application or prior to commencement of work, we'd want to condition it on there because the process to get the permits from IF and W, they, they don't, applicants don't want to get in between the town and IF and W, so they can discuss the project with IF and W upfront, certainly. And so I think having that contact upfront, but IF and W really won't sign off on their final project until they have an approval sort of from the town. Also, so it's, it, you know, it's sort of, do we get them to say IF and W or they have to, they have to design it out to get that sign off? And they need to design it around what the board wants, so as long as you have it prior to uh, land development, you know, prior to turning dirt.
I think, David, what we're really are asking is, is there a way to, to put a requirement to get it at some point in the process sooner than later? Can we ask them to say at this point, pass this, you know, sketch review, whatever, wherever we are? Can we ask, can we set a timeline of when we have to get it by so we don't go through months of review only to find out they're deemed by them?
I, I would do it probably before public hearing or at very last, uh, but when you're going for final approval. You can ask for it upfront then. So, so you have the, you basically have the project design.
No, but I think what Dave is saying is the chicken before the egg.
Yes.
That IF and W is gonna say, hey, what's the town say? The town's gonna say, what's IF and W say? Somewhere here, you know, I'd say when you get fifty percent into it, somewhere in there.
Yeah.
So that we don't waste ten more months for viewing it. They're used to be okay. There's a, 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 you know, a ninety-five percent drawing that's gone to them and the town.
Right.
Will you IF and W approve this, which is what Dave is saying, which is prior to approval, which seems like we've done the whole thing now. And now IF and W says, no, now you gotta do this, which requires them to come back and, and redo the whole thing, which almost seems somewhat inevitable in this regard. As we talk about it.
Couldn't, could we say, require it before a preliminary plan is approved? Because they're going to come to us first. And we rarely approve a preliminary plan when it's presented to us at first, at least to get feedback.
Right, and also it's, by the time they submit, it's usually fully developed, David. We're not talking about, you know, there's like, we do a lot of like, don't forget this, don't forget that, you didn't do this, you didn't do that, but they come in with a full set of plans. We're not talking like some, you know, napkin sketch here, so. In that sense, I, I also, and not, not to be a cynic, it often feels like, um, when they wait till the end is because then they can say to MDEP or IF and W, look, the town is okay with it, we just need your approval. And there's a lot more pressure then on those agencies to sort of say, oh, well, the town's okay. And, you know, maybe I'm wrong. I think MDEP and actually IF and W have been really good at, you know, toeing the line of what they need, but it just, I don't know, we should get it sooner, is all I can say. Okay.
I want to say too, and I was gonna bring this up later, we'll talk about it later, but, um, in the ordinance, uh, for example, like cluster subdivision, we're allowed to ask before the preliminary stage for, uh, a review from, um, the conservation commission, historic commission, migration commission, state agencies, boards, departments. So if we're allowed to get their approval for cluster subdivisions before we approve a preliminary plan, you should be able to get their approval.
Okay, but hang on, hang on. You can say anything you want to say in an ordinance. And whether or, one of the biggest failings in ordinance is, is you say stuff that can't actually happen. You can't commit a state agency to say, you're gonna review it before we get it. So if we want to go down that road like with that, then we need to call those state agencies because they're not just gonna review stuff for us. If there's no reason for them to do it.
Well, they're not reviewing it for us, they're reviewing it the applicant.
I think we just, we want the applicant to start their process.
Oh, I don't, I don't disagree with you.
Yeah, I mean, you know.
They, they just should approve that they started it?
That, that's a good compromise.
It's a good compromise. I just don't want to go down the Bennetlot Road because
Nobody wants it.
And nobody wants to do that, but let, but let me tell you, it was one of the most difficult parts of that is being just bombarded and inundated with the public wanting us to get these things in our hands. And we had to wait, and I don't want to get into a situation again where everybody in town is angry and sending us all of this correspondence saying, you're not doing your job right, you're not following the ordinance, and we are. We're doing the best we can with what we're allowed.
Hey, Dave, you know anybody at IF and W that would be a plan reviewer?
Uh, I, they change around a little bit, but I could certainly reach out to them as, and try and figure out what's a, a logical point that they would sign up on something.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It may, it may just be a letter from them saying that, yes, we met with the applicant, this is what we're gonna review for, so at least you know that they've had that conversation. It doesn't have to be finalized, but I don't think it, I don't think it would be out of, out of the realm of reasonableness to say, we want to see that you've had that conversation already at the state level with MDEP, IF and W, whatever.
I think.
It puts them on task, that, you know, they're aware that we now know.
Right, we presented a plan and now they, then we can look at this and say, okay, you did present the same basic plan to them that you're talking to us about now, so.
Right, okay.
Is, I don't, I don't see why there would be a problem though in having somebody go out and we see if there's native species on the property.
Well, it's, it's complicated though. I mean, you know, you have to do it certain times of year and certain limits. It's not, they don't just go look. They're, you know, there's all sorts of, there's a procedures.
Okay.
So, and they're very involved and it, it's also seasonal.
To the applicant, the applicant needs to look that. They, they have to figure that out themselves.
Right.
If they come to us and, oh, but they can't check the land out until the spring, that's their issue. You know?
Who doesn't like muddies?
Yeah, there, there are species of, uh, I think it was the, Joe, correct me if I'm wrong, it was like the white-nosed bat that you couldn't, you couldn't cut any trees during, uh, during their mating season. And it was, and it was like this sort of this month of, but you could only determine that they were actually living in the area once a year or something. I, it was crazy, but had to be done.
Even more, they eat mosquitoes. I mean, you know, we want that.
Okay, so where, so where are we at? Okay, we are at.
Six.
Six, number six.
Uh, well, C, the environmental impact assessment.
Right? So we were, we went through critters and I was gonna add the applicant, uh, under IF and W.
Yeah, thank you.
And then we talked about the critter corridors.
Then, so we're onto D, site plan.
Right.
The application shall include site landscape plans.
One thing under, uh, site plan, Dave, can, it says, uh, it has to show existing and proposed tree lines and clearing areas. When that, on, on one page you can see that, but on the other page, can, can we see like this? Maybe this question has been answered, but if we say we stick with that five hundred foot setback, that, you know, can we see where, uh, what, what is a shade management area? Is there, are, is there a particular size to these things or? I understand what shade is, but it's not included in the buffer, so what is it? Is it ten feet, fifteen feet? Well, how do you define a shade management area?
Does the.
It would only be the south side of the property.
It would here.
Yeah, but, yeah. So one of the things that I put down, and, and I think it's gonna address it, Greg, if you go down in site plan, uh, excuse, under cross-sections.
Good.
Oh, yeah.
And so one of the things that I added, so I think it was, well, this last time around was showing a dray, adjacent roadways and neighboring structures by type of use. Uh, also existing of proposed site modifications, topography, and baggage points from area high points and adjacent residential zoning districts. Um, and with this whole cross-section section, uh, this, the entire section E, which is talking about cross-sections, I tried to put in there to, so the, the, the board can look at a particular site and because of the, uh, the topography, provide screening for people that may be lower or maybe. So.
I understand, thank you.
Okay.
I assume somewhere here they provided drainage plan, right?
They, they, yeah, they'll have to do drainage plan as part of the whole site grading plan.
So is everybody on E? Is there a rate to E?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna.
I'm gonna.
So I, I have sort of a stupid question again. Um, under like site restoration plan, right? I know these things sort of, um, the solar panels themselves fail after twenty years or so, but why don't you just replace them with more solar panels? Like, why return the whole thing to some, you know, undisturbed, it's, we were never here kind of all of it? Like, why don't they just come in and put in more solar panels?
They do.
They do?
Yeah, as part of a regular, yes, uh, as part of a regular maintenance program, they would come in there, um, and change out panels. So if a panel is failing or not performing properly, gets broken or something like that, they would just come in and naturally replace the panels. They're, they're, they're different parts, they just ship in and swap out. The end of life plan is for, for example, right now, solar farms are usually going at about a twenty year, uh, life. And who knows in twenty years what, you know, what kind of ingenuity would, would have changed it. And they're gonna make solar farms obsolete, probably not. But with that life, if you no longer need solar farms, there's, you know, all of a sudden we're harvesting ocean power instead. They have to return the state to its, to an original sort of natural state and let it recome into, uh, you can't just leave, you can't leave so, solar panels just to disintegrate.
I, I get that, but so I guess, so this isn't a fait accompli, it's not, it's not a given that every solar farm is gonna end up going through an end of life site restoration plan, right? It's possible that in twenty years, we haven't actually harvested wind power or any other power and we're gonna actually have a whole new solar farm there, right? They're not, it's not a gift, they're gonna, that, right? That they're gonna just abandon it.
Right, and if, no, if they're not, it, it's unlikely they would just abandon it, but, um, if they, if after twenty years, it may be that the technologies change, that they need to reconfigure things on the existing site, which may require it to come back. Most leases, a, a lot of the properties, uh, are being leased for twenty year periods, for example. So the person who owns the farm down the street, for example, leases that twenty acres to the solar farm for that period. And after that twenty years, they're required to take it down unless they change their, their lease. If they extend that lease for another twenty years, there are some requirements that have to kick in for the town, like they'd have to redo their bonding and things like that.
So it seems like we asked them for. So it seems like we ask them for a plan, but we don't tell them what's required in the plan. It's what they have to provide to us as their plan. Like they could say, we're gonna pave it over and create a parking lot, right? So it says, show us what your proposed restoration plan is, but do we tell them what we want for restoration? Can we?
No.
You, you, you can, sure. Uh, that, the thing is, if, if part of the plan should be submitting a restoration plan to you, so at the beginning of the process, you're gonna know, here's what the site looks like today. In 20 years, what is this site gonna look like? And if, for example, they said, yeah, we wanna pave the whole 20 acres, you go, guess what? We're not approving your project because that's not an acceptable thing. Plus it requires permits or whatever.
We have to say, acceptable? I mean, don't we have to say we want it restored to whatever its natural beauty or something or?
You can, you could have it restored into which that natural vegetative state, but with the understanding is that what they are going to propose is going, will be to remove all the panels, the equipment, and basically put seed down and allow the forest to eventually close in on it. Really, uh, i- is what happens. But you wanna make sure that when they're taking out all the equipment, they have restored the ground where the equipment used to be and that has, for example, native species growing in it.
Yeah, if they wanted to build, then they'd have to.
Well, it's not that. It's just we don't say what they have to replace it with. We just, we ask them to give us a plan, but we don't say, and it says, there's a suggestion of what that might, but it doesn't say we asked them to do that. We're not telling them what they, what's acceptable to us or.
I, we could add language in there, certainly. I, I, I think that's a good idea.
Okay, that's all. I just, I think we should say this will look like when you leave and, you know, if we have an idea of what that is and if somebody says, we're gonna come with a building plan, then, you know, we take that into account and do the same. I'll be gone by then, so I, you know, whatever. I'll be colonizing Mars by then.
So I'm on H. I don't know if anybody else has got.
I'm on H.
H, H, I had a note that I didn't quite understand, so I just put it in red and I, I had a note that said can. And it said something about 2,000 square feet of construction for helipads. I have no idea where it came from.
Um, so as far as my knowledge, we don't have any airports within the South Bronx confines.
Oh, okay. Helipad, okay.
I sent you the.
Right. Okay, so this was when we were talking about the FAA more, so.
Right, yeah. So we're not gonna do the Angler Blair study, the military. We're not gonna consider any airports, but the helipad, what my FAA person, Mr. Palmeroy, said was not 2,000 square feet, but one to 2,000-foot circle around the.
Oh, for notification.
Be considered an AR zone. Yeah, that's, it's small, but a helipad's a multi-directional access point. So it's not like an airport where you have your AOA area and that's it.
For the, for the, I got it now. Okay, that makes, I, I know what you're trying to get. I think, I was, I didn't understand my own note, frankly.
So is in residential? So there's no place to have a? I don't know. We have a.
I think the conversation was centered around what's the fire department doing for a landing plan. Was there any concerns associated with like?
Yeah, we've got, you know, one location is right there, um, next to the tennis courts. Fire station, that's one of them. And we haven't established any other ones so far in town. But there's like open fields and stuff like that. And you get to access and stuff like that. We could use it, but we, that's the only one that we have designated right now.
And that's all they had gone by was designated.
Right.
H pads and so.
Yeah, yeah. There, there actually was a, a landing strip, um, between 236 and Old Fields Road. On a property right near where Amy lives. Um, you know that. There used to be a guy in a little plane and he used to land it there.
Was it grass strip?
Yeah, now it's grass. Yep.
Well, was it grass from there landing?
I don't know. Yeah, probably. I don't know.
I remember there, but I don't, you know.
There's a, there's like a big orange ball on the, on the telephone wire for that reason. That's why it's there because she wanted to make sure he sees it before he lands his plane. Okay, sorry. Little town history moment there.
So public safety.
And, uh, the public safety information I, I included in this because the plans are different from just the site plan review because they have a lot of gates they have, or, excuse me, they have a lot of fencing. There's a lot of panels, so making sure that emergency responders can get in there, how they, you know, how they unlock the gates, how they can turn around if need be. Uh, and so I'm asking them for, to submit all this information and basically what we would need is a sign off from the fire department saying, oh, you're okay. But they should have this information to specifically answer for the fire department rather than them asking for it.
So I, I, do, do these solar farm operators have like a local contact or, you know, if there's an emergency, does that mean we call somebody in Virginia?
Right. And, and they, they do have local contacts. Uh, and so they should make sure that E911 or, you know, has that information up front. Just making sure that it's up to date.
On Jay.
Me too.
Okay, hold on. All right, we're on Jay bonding. All right. This language, um, really needs to be evaluated by the town's attorney. I put it in there. Um, I wouldn't spend a ton of time on that because prior to, uh, it's sort, again, this is more of a placeholder and I was going to put a note in there saying this should be reviewed by the town attorney. I wanna make sure that their input's in there.
Two, well, 2% inflation ain't gonna cut it because right now we're at six, so.
Right. Well, that's why, yeah, you have to build in the inflation, but.
I'm the only town council leader.
Oops. Take that responsible for.
I was getting ready to point that out.
You guys are team leaders there. You know, what'll be interesting is you can come up with a native plan planting, planting plat of data plants, right? And in 20 years, those are gonna be completely different, right? Because of climate change. Because we'll be, we're gonna be one and a half or two degrees hotter by then, right? In about 20 years, I think. Or maybe we'll be underwater in a week, so.
I, I would agree with Dave. I, I think we need to get the legal opinion on the appropriateness of a bond and I think the other term was escrow and that, that's a, a 20-year bond escrow is a big commitment.
Right.
Developer and the town and I don't think the town would want that on the books, so to speak, and once they take possession of it, they gotta report on it, so. I, I, I think if we can get a, what is, what does the legal community say about this? And then they'll give us a list of here's what you can and can't do.
Right.
And then we'll relay what we wanna do around there.
And what I have seen is, for example, DEP will hold the bonding. And so then we have a condition in there that basically prior to DEP releasing their bonding, they have to have a sign off from the town. So DEP would manage it, but we, the town would have to say, yes, we're okay with the, with DEP, uh, releasing it.
Can I ask, what, what happens on, um, privately owned dams? Like all the hydropower that's owned around here by, you know, international companies? Do they have a bond somehow in place or is there anything that's required?
Yeah, there's usually bonding in place for any kind of works project like that. I mean, most of them have gone through some kind of planning board approval process at the state or local level and usually get that bonding when the project is approved. But both dams are gonna be regulated by the state.
Okay.
I'm on page 10. Is anybody else on page?
Page 10. All right, planning board questions.
Pause for a moment. There is a.
What's the purpose of the police to sign off on number K?
I, I, I'm sorry, um, where are you at, Joe?
K, on page nine.
Inspections.
Yeah.
Hey.
Yeah, under K, inspections.
You mean CEO.
Says the inspector shall occur after the establishment's.
Oh, CEO, sorry.
And sign-offs have been received by the police and fire departments. Yeah. So, another typo. Please, you know.
Do you want, how does that, how would you like this ratified?
If only that's where we security issue and I don't think that's up to this.
They're not, they're not involved in any of it throughout the whole process, so. What would they be inspecting? That's the way I look at it. It wouldn't.
What do they, would we be, would we be asked to sign off on that? Yeah, fair enough.
True. Yeah, that's the way I look at it.
I included.
Some of the storefronts.
Yeah.
They have security and they have to sign off on that security plan and stuff like that. There's, there's no security plans here. So they wouldn't have anything to really inspect.
I, I.
That's it.
Yeah. I, it could easily come out. I included it because just so all emergency services are signing off on, again, I, I put it in there primarily just because all the fencing and gates and getting in and out, if the police needed to get in there for some reason or they got there before fire, I just wanted someone to have a plan in place, but I.
The only thing is, if they get there before fire, they can't get in anyway without a key.
They don't have a knox box key.
They don't have a knox box key.
Should they have a knox box?
No, they, they can't have one. They're law.
Really?
Yeah. It's a weird, it's a weird thing now.
So should I just take police out of there?
I understand.
What's that?
Should I just take inspection should occur, uh, should occur? Should I just strike the word police? So written sign-off received by the fire department?
The code enforcement officer and, you know, the fire department, yeah.
Okay. Are there any questions on page 10? I think we addressed them all pretty much. But I have, I have one of my own that's, I'm, I'm grateful.
Yeah, I think, I don't think there's anything else, David. It looks like.
So.
What else you guys have?
But my only thing is, it, it's once again, I think all this is great and really needed, but it's once again, are we gonna allow them anywhere in town we want? Anywhere where there's 20 acres, you can plop, plop one down. And are there gonna be areas, whether it's, it's an overlay area and we say not here? Or it's by our, whatever, like R3 or, you know, and, and clearly like, there's nowhere to put one in Aggie or Oak Mill. It's like, well, that might be true though. It's all wetlands over there. So, you know, there's all that in the town deals, but. So I, I, I don't know. And that's really for me, it was all about where should they go? Not really a lot of, this detail's important, but it really is. Is there anywhere in town we don't want them to go?
Well, I, I, I think one thing to keep in mind though is, is these uses have to connect to the electrical grid. Which means they're, they are ready. That's a limiting factor where they go anyway. So the first thing for them to do is how would they connect to the grid before they even talk to the town? They usually come in and say, here's how I'm gonna connect. Uh, here's how we would connect to the system. And it, they can't just plop one anywhere on the face of the earth.
Okay, that being said, um, I, I was a little about how this works. Um, like, how many places are we talking about in town that are viable then that they can hook into the grid? Because I could have looked at the map and I would never have known like Junction Road was close enough to what, I don't know, are you looking for a transformer? Are you looking for phase three in a box somewhere? Are you, you know, I don't even know what those things mean, but I can throw them out there. So, you know. Where, where, how many places are we talking about? Is it really that limited or is it like every block has a place they can hook into?
So the residential ones were, my brother's been doing a little bit helping with. You can, you can push in any, any transformer. It's just a meter you wanna change up on. It's the, it's the two we throw from the company, so it doesn't really matter your access point.
But that's a really small scale.
You're right. So it would come down to the, the, but the line you're coming in off the road, which on the thousands of poles, so you're.
Right.
So your modification on that is, you can, you can push in 510, 20 kilowatt, uh, megawatts if you wanted to. On most lines that are, you look up, breaks out, the breakouts at most junctions are thousands of them, I think. Those are the pop breakers that are on the, the pots they're on. So your, uh, it all comes down to money, really, if you wanna run poles, which is mainly expensive.
10,000 miles of poles.
Now we wouldn't be pushing, pushing a thousand feet of, uh, poles and cable up my brother's property. That is ridiculous. That's what started the full solar company.
Well, so, so then, is there a way to identify those places, David, or are they just really all over town?
I, I'm sure there is a way to do it, but I, I mean, you'd have to do a site assessment on, on each site. I mean, you could, you could do a rough count, maybe. It'd be very hard because not knowing, you know, you may, you could have a 50-acre site or 100-acre site that had so much in the way of environmental issues with it that you couldn't do anything with it. You may have a 20-acre site that you could just squeeze something in there, you know, 15 acres just because of the lot. It's.
Well, I, I think, and I don't disagree with what you're saying, Hershey, there, and I think we got through the majority of the ordinance. We're kinda coming back to, okay, now that we're satisfied so far with the wording, it really does come back to where do we want them and how they, and size limitation. You wanna do a size limitation, 15 acres. Well, I, I don't know. I don't know.
Right. I think, I think to get, there's like, there's a, you have to get, is it, is it that it's limited to five megawatts or it has to be at least five megawatts to sell it back? Right. And that's, and we decided that's 20 acres. So I, I don't think we can make it less than that because that would be dizzy, famine every town. And I don't feel like that's fair either. But, you know, you don't wanna see all of our five turn into nothing but solar farms. And a, a lot of places out there are big lots and the new definition and it could be inundated. So it's sort of like the medical marijuana retail store. Like you want a few, that's fair, but you don't want like the whole town overrun, uh, with every storefront easily. Right? We wanna be equitable. And I don't, I don't really know what that looks like in, without looking at every tax map once again. Or maybe we should all go home and, you know, call up the tax map and look at the one that just has, you know, outlines what each zone is, right? Or zoning that really, not the tax map, I guess. And, you know, see if we can take a look at what kind of properties are out there and where we think they should go. And I'm okay with like I1 and I2, I guess. I mean, I don't think there's any bottom land big enough to accommodate 20 acres of solar farm at this point anyway.
Well, uh, and if you remember, one of the, one of the things that we were going to do, as this is going to be a new specific use, the land use table is going to have to be changed as part of that, as we add the new use. And part of that exercise is going to be saying, okay, you can go here, you can't go here, you can only go, and, and, and laying some of those things out. Now, the acreage issue is going to, you know, someone has 50 acres in the middle of town. I don't think they're gonna put a solar farm up there, but. Yeah, not saying it.
It wasn't half that powderhouse hill one is sort of the middle of town. And wonderful one up there, so, you know. It could move anywhere.
I guess, I guess if we are at a, it sounds like to me that we're almost at a point that in general, everyone's, the board's agreeable with what we have so far. Is, is that correct? I, then how about for the next go-through, in addition to the changes you've given me, we start bringing in the land use table portion and, and start looking at that?
I, I, I gotta, I gotta see though. I, I, I gotta, I gotta see, though, like, can we get a, 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 and you can get like a color, there's a color coded, you know, zoning map of the town that's online somewhere. Let me just, and there's one that's blown up somewhere, I think. Is it? Can we bring that into?
Are, are map, the tax maps digitized?
Yeah, totally, you can, there's.
So, okay.
We're working.
Well, they don't have to be necessarily fully up to date, if they're overseen by like a surveying company or something like that, they can run
They're not.
A program where they can highlight all of the 20 acre cars.
And doing that as of this next budget, it's gonna be.
Assessing is in literally, right in the middle of it, map became today.
But we have, I mean, even the last iteration. I have something down.
If, if our assessing software could put together a list of 28 acres or more, that's.
Probably good.
You can, you can sort by that kind of information, but then it's a matter of, I mean, yeah, you could sort the data right now, but as far as mapping it, if it's not digitized, that'd be more of a challenge, but.
We can, if you could run a report, the mapping programs, you can say now highlight red, right, you know, and that's, and you get a real good depiction as to.
They don't have G I S right now.
Okay.
Right.
The R5, they don't want anything up in that area because it's agamaticus to the sea, so.
Yeah.
But it's not all protected, I mean, that's the problem, right?
Well, that's what I'm saying, I mean, that.
Right, but that would be one of the areas that you could say that it's not a, it's not a, a use, it's not allowed in that zoning district. And you do that with the, you do that with table, uh, was it table A?
Yeah, you just go across the lake.
You go across the, you go across it and, and then, once you have that, they're going to have to prove that, that their proposal fits in with those, with those uses and meets these standards.
Well, you're bringing up the R5 again, here we go, where, where, where's the, uh, the comp plan on that in terms of the identification and the desires, the desires of each of the zones?
Right.
And our five conversation that you bring up comes from, you know, the comp plan, so we're gonna go down that road and we should go down that road for all of it, you know, and I'm not saying that's right or wrong, but I know we're already gonna be working on it, but.
I think the problem is, we can't wait for the comp plan to be.
I know. Right, but it's something that you might just, a quick look at, I don't think it would be hard to look at.
Yeah.
No. I've got the old one printed out.
So. At this point, I think I would recommend that the table, the discussion, come back at our next meeting, prepared to look at table A, look at a zoning map, review it before you come, and then we can hash out.
Okay.
Table A.
Really, can we, can we ask the planning department, do you need to, you know, have a map? Thanks. I'm gonna pick it up as staples, I will, but I, you know.
We, I believe it talked to.
Yeah, because we.
On Monday, we talked to one about it.
Yeah, we should be able to get one and you could bring it over to Staples, like.
We can send it digitally, if you have a, it's just online, you just send it over as a file and they'll print it up on this size, you know. And then we can look at it, and then that'll be.
Right.
Yep. Does everyone want an agreement to table it for now?
Yeah, I think we're done.
Actually, I have some member comments. Sorry, everybody. First, I just want to, um, you know, acknowledge that we received some letters regarding the subdivision that we were, that we had a sketch plan with before. I just want to acknowledge that we received them. Um, and with that said, I still want to read our ordinance for the public so that they understand what our three stages are and what the point is. The sketch plan is for conceptual review only, we don't waive anything at a sketch plan review. We only look at, um, if it looks like it can, can conceptually be done, we don't want to go, we don't want to get into a project that isn't doable from the get-go. Um, so I, we appreciate the feedback, however, we are following, um, our ordinance and doing what we're supposed to be doing for the sketch plan. Um, the concerns that are out there, we will be addressing in the preliminary plan, however, our hands are tied to the process. And I just, um, ask for patience and, um, you know, continued involvement. Um, we certainly want public input and we certainly want, um, we want that feedback, um, but there will be a time for it. And I just ask that the public do understand that we're doing our very best to follow the law, what we're, what we're required to do um, by the town law, and then, um, and we understand concerns, we're doing our best, um, we're volunteers, um, we take time away from our families to do this. And, uh, we really do, I think, put in a lot of time to make sure that we're doing things the way we're supposed to be doing them, so I just wanted to address that. Um, and then my other comment is, dun, 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 I will not be renewing my planning board membership.
So, okay, sorry.
So, come the end of June, the second Wednesday in June, I will be done. My kids have grown in three years since I've been on the board, now they're all in school and they all have activities.
Doesn't that give you more time to do things?
No, not in the evenings, not after school hours. Um, but I really loved my time.
I remember the first day you came in.
Yeah, what do you remember? Yeah, I think my, uh, second meeting was that public hearing in town council.
Very exciting.
And, um, I'll never forget, yeah, um, Jack asked me, he, I was like the first person he asked about a vote, and I go, do I have to?
So what is your last day?
So my last day, I was like, in, the second was in June, the last meeting in June, I think it was the 16th, no, uh, yeah, 15.
Bill Cole is who, is he our first alternate?
For now, is it this, right now?
For now.
Oh, we're now, so he moves up onto it, those are first backup.
It will be come Ju, come January, uh, my God, July starts officially, it'll be July 1st, um, and in the first meeting of July, we will need to discuss what to do with chair, vice chair. All the organizational stuff will happen on July 1st.
And also, is it, you're, you're in a term that also.
Yeah, it expired, I mean, I'm, I'll ask to be removed.
Okay, yeah, so all that will happen in the 1st of July.
Okay, right. Exciting.
Things were warned. Any other member comments?
So the only comment that I would ask for consideration at another meeting, something to consider, there's a lot of uh, new subdivision stuff coming at us, and I really think we should use that, that provision that allows us to bring on an independent engineer on our behalf to review on our behalf for, yes, all these projects. I did go back and I watched the prior meeting and the, upon subdivision, whatever they call that now, uh, is gonna be pretty interesting, it's pretty big, and it's a big subdivision, and, um, so I would suggest that we consider that, so I don't know the process for that.
Yeah. Yeah.
We have.
Yeah.
You're not.
Notification that we're supposed to notify the.
Isn't it after preliminary?
Yeah, I don't know, going into it, and then you can say, okay, we're gonna have an outside company.
So all I think, before we get too far into anything else, I'd like to, myself, you know, I know we've all, we've done a lot of sketch plans recently, but you know, even Blackmore Road, you know, some of this stuff out there, you know, especially the proximity to other towns and the amount of development that's being put in. You know, I think we should get some other advice on that to kind of be the town's rep on that, so I just want to make sure we don't lose that, that ability in the process that always should have been for that five weeks ago, you know, so that's, that's.
We have Jay at Simulco, something to tell, with that, right?
Yeah, you can get Jay, Chris or Basket can look at.
Kristi, yeah, exactly.
You know, David can, you know, I mean, there's, there's a lot of different.
Yeah. So I just want to, as we move on in this, because some of the stuff is gonna get more and more complicated, you know, I'm not an engineer.
It is gonna start to be.
Yeah, so I think I'll have to use that tool.
And then, of course, Joe's last day will be the end of July.
Yeah.
Yeah. It just, it just closed.
So I guess what I'm seeing is I just want to be clear on that.
It's in, it's in your.
We can request.
I just want to make sure that there's not a whole process.
Communicating a lot easier in person than we were doing prior with COVID, when we were going through the situation.
We also haven't had subdivisions since Bill left.
Yeah, right.
So since I've been, since I've been chair, we haven't had a subdivision.
We haven't approved any plans this year.
And Bill was an engineer, so we didn't have.
Well, yeah.
Yeah, as long as we keep the public knowing what's going on, too, that's why with the Mother's Day, it's a big, a big change.
There are no other member comments, so. Oh, a second, any discussion?
I'm gonna take you back.
The CM, Villa State, that's the better one.
That's the metal phone.
Goodbye, happy Mother's Day to all you mothers. I, I'm leaving to visit mine on Friday morning, it's some god-awful time.
Well, have a safe trip.
Thanks, see ya.
David, thank you.